Good morning, I'd like to call the January 14, 2016 regularly scheduled Planning Commission to order. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Knapp, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning Commissioners, there are no changes to the agenda, however, I would like to take this time to introduce our newest planner who will be presenting before you this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon is a graduate from FSU with a master's degree in urban planning. Before joining us here at Manatee County, he did work a short time in the private sector. And over the past six months, Brandon's worked very closely with the other planners to learn the intricacies and processes involved with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. I can say without hesitation, Brandon is very much a go-getter, has been a great asset to the team, and that will be very evident to you all, I assure you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Good morning, thank you for having me, I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much, thank you. Getting some new faces, both on the dais and the staff. Okay, County Attorney's Office, are there any comments, changes, announcements?
No changes.
New staff?
[laughing]
Commissioners, you have any items, anything prior to going to the next item? Seeing nothing. I would like to recognize Ms. Lecoey-Ax resigned from the Planning Commission. She was a, had an opinion that was always welcomed and sometimes unique, so gonna miss her. So we'll have, again, a new face on the dais, hopefully in the near future. The next item on the agenda is the minutes. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes? Okay. Chair, we'll entertain a motion. Mr. Rhodes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 10th, 2015.
Thank you. Got it. Motion by Mr. Rhodes, second by Mr. DeLezline, are there any, is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Those opposed, seeing none, passes. Five to zero, or five to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, Citizen Comments. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on an item that is not on the agenda? If you have comments regarding items that are on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity later. But is there anything that's not on the agenda that you would wish to step forward and speak about? Seeing none, we're gonna go to the next item. We need to establish the rules. Could you please explain the rules of process?
The applicant is entitled to 15 minutes for presentation and five minutes for a rebuttal. Individuals may speak for three minutes and anyone representing a group or organization of five or more members may speak for 10 minutes. If you represent a group, please state the group you represent and provide written authority to speak after the group. When you step to the podium, please state whether or not you've been sworn. And all of those who plan on testifying before this Planning Commission, rise, why it minister the oath.
Please, if you plan on speaking on anything, if you would, please rise. Thank you.
We will affirm that the factual statements and factual representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We have nothing on consent, is that correct? Let me make sure, request. So there's really nothing to pull from the agenda. So we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first item, item number one, Ms. Knapp, could you please read that into the record?
We have PA 1503, Ordinance 1535, 301 Oxford LLP, an amendment to the future land use map to designate specific real property from Office Medium to the Residential Office Retail and Residential 12, future land use classifications.
Thank you. Are there any ex parte communications the Commissioners need to disclose regarding this item? Anything? Nothing. So we're gonna move to the introduction by staff. Ms. Tusing, could please introduce this application?
Yes, good morning Commissioners, my name is Margaret Tusing with Building and Development Services and I have been sworn. As Ms. Knapp stated, this is a plan amendment, a large-scale map amendment, from the OM, which is Office Medium, to Residential Office Retail for 5.18 acres and approximately 14 acres of Residential 12. The original change was made in 2008 to the OM, which does not allow residential uses as consideration. It does allow office and some limited retail. The applicant will present at this time and then I will follow up with anything that I need to add to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would ask the applicant to come forward and please make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Will Robinson, I've been sworn. And we're here today, as Margaret mentioned, for a comprehensive plan amendment from the existing designation of Office Medium, or OM, to ROR, mainly on the US 301 portion of the property, and RES 12. My colleague Rachel Leighton of ZNS Engineering will go, will show a map and let you know exactly where those designations are located. Also with us are Nathan Crott of ZNS Engineering, and Hugh and Richard Pascoe of Grimal Crawford for any traffic questions. As Margaret mentioned, our request is for a comprehensive plan amendment. And Margaret did a good job of mentioning how we got here in terms of where we were in 2008, which was we came in front of you and the Board of County Commission, and actually worked with your staff and created a new comprehensive plan designation, Office Medium. It wasn't in your comp plan before we worked with staff on it. And subsequent to that, in 2009, we got the property rezoned to plan development commercial for up to 150,000 square foot of mainly office-related uses with the site plan. And for a comp plan amendment, we have to show to you a justification or a change in circumstances that would justify the change from the existing designation of OM to what we're requesting, ROR, a mix of ROR and RES 12. As your staff report has done an excellent job in describing those changes and justification, we'll do the same. Mainly, we've seen an increase in residential development in the parish community with limited commercial development, resulting in longer trips for those services for parish residents. We believe the parish community needs vibrant community uses, mainly restaurant uses, and a mix of housing types. The Office Medium current designation no longer makes any sense for the property, or really the area, with its commercial limitations and emphasis on office use. So that's why we're here in front of you today. We've actually submitted a site plan, and it's currently under review by the Manatee County staff, and we'll be back in front of you, hopefully soon, for your consideration of that item. As you've seen in the staff report, your staff recommends approval, and we request your recommendation of approval. And following me will be Rachel Leighton of ZNS Engineering, who will describe our application in more detail, and certainly we're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Robinson, before you step down, you said you've submitted a site plan for rezon?
No, it's already zoned, planned development commercial, so our application is just for a site plan that has a mix of the residential uses and uses that we're describing in this comprehensive plan application.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly Rachel can talk to you more about that as well.
Okay, thank you. And I forgot to mention that this is a legislative action, not a quasi-judicial, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Rachel Leighton with ZNS Engineering, I have been sworn. If we could start the PowerPoint presentation. As Will mentioned, we are here today seeking adoption of a large-scale conference of map amendment. So I want to talk about the area and some of the things that are happening in the parish area and why we've decided that, to pursue the comprehensive plan amendment. 301 Oxford LLP purchased 19.5 acre site located approximately 1,000 feet east of the intersection of Chin Road and US 301 in parish in 2006. The site is on the south side of US 301 adjacent to Oxford Road. So you can see here, we've got to the north of us, we've got Lexington, we've got another subdivision here, and we've got Kingsfield Lakes. This area really is a transition between the former agricultural uses and residential development with limited commercial opportunities. We do have a shopping center here that's got Publix inside. Utilities do exist in the US 301 right-of-way. These utilities include a 16-inch force main and a 4-inch force main and a 20-inch water main. I know, as we met with the neighbors, they were concerned about the availability of sewer, and that sewer is available in that area. There is Buffalo Creek Park, Olamay Park, and the Fort Hamer Park and Rowing Facility within a few miles of the subject site, so the recreational opportunities are available in the area. There are multiple schools in the area as well. The school district report indicated the site is districted for Williams Elementary, Lincoln Middle, and Palmetto High School. However, Virgil Mills and Buffalo Creek Middle School are also in proximity. Again, as Will and Margaret had mentioned earlier, the future land use category right now for the property is OM, and it was amended from UF3 back in 2008. To the north of the property is RES 6, we've got a pocket of ROR, and then we've got UF3 and RES 6. So we have a transitioning of densities in this area. The current zoning is PDC, and I do want to clarify, we've submitted a plan development mixed-use rezon application to preliminary site plan standards. We had hoped to have everything on the same agenda, but will be a few months delayed in having that presentation to you. But right now, it is entitled for 150,000 square feet of non-residential space, and that entitlement is currently active. We've maintained all of those entitlements throughout the downturn in the economy and the changes.
Thank you.
So the proposed Conference of Plan Map Amendment, the frontage, the 5.18 acres that we mentioned earlier is for the ROR, and that's to allow for four commercial out parcels to be developed in the future. And the remainder, we're proposing at RES 12, and that's just over 14 acres. And for that RES 12, we would like to see a multifamily development in the future, and that's why we're proposing that higher change. So the request is consistent with the Community Planning Act of Chapter 163, Part 2 of the Florida statutes, as well as the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan. The change in designations, we believe, is compatible with development trends in the area and existing surrounding densities through the proposed site plan design. So I want to talk a little bit about development projects in concurrency in North County. This map, the county continues to update it, and you can see, we're actually right about in here. And so you see that growth is happening and entitlements are in place according to the concurrency map for North County. But what we did in our office was we took the GIS layers for the existing subdivisions and the concurrency map, and you can really see that there are not very many pockets of undeveloped or unentitled land along this corridor of US 301 going into the core of parish. So we really feel like this is an infill property here and that the higher density of the RES 12 that we're requesting can be made compatible with the surrounding area. And we actually, I brought a copy of the site plan just so that I could show how we're proposing that this RES 12 would be compatible, so if I could switch to the overhead. So this is the plan that's currently been submitted with the rezon and preliminary site plan application. And I just want to point out, just briefly, that the separations that are being proposed on this plan. We're proposing a setback of 283 feet to the neighbors to the south. From US 301, we're set back 370 feet to that first building. And then on the east side, we're proposed 92 feet and on, sorry, 93 feet, and then on the west side, it's 73 feet. So that setback then looks like a football field. So it really is substantial setbacks, and that's how we're proposing that this is compatible with the surrounding areas for the higher density. There is no multifamily in the area. So the ROR and the RES 12 would allow for a maximum of 178 dwelling units and 67,000 square feet of non-residential development. However, what the preliminary site plan proposes is 168 dwelling units and 22,500 square feet of non-residential spaces. And this is also outlined in the traffic impact statement prepared by Grimal Crawford. The proposed change will encourage infill development and will utilize existing infrastructure along US 301. The request supports how will we grow by reducing urban sprawl and by increasing density where public facilities exist. Further, the report states that continuing low-density suburban development puts premature strains on existing infrastructure, is an inefficient land use pattern, and has fewer taxpayers per linear foot of infrastructure. The report encourages opportunities for greater densities and intensities at or near intersections or fully classified, functionally classified roadways, sorry. The traffic impact statement has been approved by Manatee County. The change in designations actually reduces the trips by 13 PM peak hour trips. So the 150,000 square feet that it's entitled for now is actually a higher traffic impact than the ROR and the RES 12 as proposed. We also hired a team to do a market study for us for the multifamily development. And the study analyzed the area from Moxon Walla Road from the north and south to the Manatee River, and from I-75 on the west to Rutland and Rye Road to the east. There are no Class A rental properties in this area. There's only one multifamily development in all of this area in North County. And that is Tuscanee Lakes. The market demand showed a need for higher density to allow for multifamily residential in the project in the parish area. And the Conference of Plan encourages that. In Section Policy 2.9.1, they encourage a mix of housing stock. It shouldn't all be single-family detached. We should have, to build a strong community, single-family semi-detached multifamily and detached housing. So that would actually allow the parish area to continue to grow and become its own community, to have the residential component and the higher-density residential. And again, that furthers the goals that were set and the vision of how will we grow. The ROR portion, again, will allow for four commercial out parcels. And I do want to mention that Parish Village News did a survey of their citizens and the residents in the area, and it resulted in a need for additional restaurants and retail space. And also, they're desiring that sense of community similar to Lakewood Branch, and I believe that this application in front of you would bring that. During the application review process, I met with the Parish Civic Association Board on October 6th and made a brief presentation to that board. Following that meeting, we actually met with the entire Parish Civic Association to discuss the project on October 22nd at their regularly scheduled monthly meeting. We had almost 80 people in attendance at that meeting. So we've been making ourselves very vocal and announcing the project to all of the residents in the area, and they've got traffic concerns, which have been addressed through the traffic report, and, you know, just the change overall in the density has been discussed. We also held a formal neighborhood meeting on November 17th, and we had approximately 40 residents at that meeting, and we spoke with them one-on-one so that we could address all of their concerns. We did respond to all of the traffic, stormwater, and development questions during these meetings, and we have worked closely with staff throughout the process. The request has received a positive staff report, and if I could switch back to the PowerPoint? And again, this is really, truly, becomes an infill project. And so that ROR is just for the frontage, and then the Residential 12 is for the rear of the site. And in summary, the proposed future land use categories are compatible with development in the area. The request is consistent with Florida statutes and the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan. This serves, again, as an infill project and captures the vision of Manatee County by implementing and supporting how will we grow. We respectfully request transmittal of the plan amendment, and that concludes my part of the presentation. Will, do you have any closing statements? We'll take any questions you have.
Yes, Ms. Leighton, could you go to the graphic previous?
Oop.
Yes, that one. Why is there a residential, built-out residential community that's not identified the same as the?
I think that's because of the age of that development, because it wasn't showing up on any of the GIS layers, because there's also, there are a few that aren't showing up that are built out.
But it, technically, it falls under the same representation.
Correct, correct.
All right. Another question, you, I hesitate to bring up something that is on a future application, but you represented a setback on a graphic you presented during a legislative process. Is that by rule, that setback, or is that at the?
It is not. There, the plan development residential requirement would normally be a 20-foot greenbelt buffer in the north central overlay district, and then a 25-foot front yard setback, and we are proposing something that's actually in keeping with the original application so that we're keeping that commitment to Kingsfield Lakes.
Okay, so my question is regarding the intent. It's the intent of the applicant to provide that setback.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions for the applicant?
I just have two questions.
Mr. Rutledge?
The market study you described that shows the demand and the interviews with the residents, did you file those with the county?
We filed neighborhood meeting summary letters, and that detailed all of the meetings that we had with them, and we did submit portions of the market study as part of our application.
And the interviews with the residents, that's a summary, you didn't have the, you said?
It wasn't individual interviews, it was in the form of a neighborhood meeting, and so we submitted that summary.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Are there any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to staff presentation. You'll have an opportunity, ma'am. No, we'll announce it and we'll call you up. Thank you, though. Public participation is encouraged.
Yes, good morning, Margaret Tusing with Building and Development Services again. Ms. Leighton did an excellent job of presenting this plan amendment request, and staff has reviewed the plan amendment for the ROR on the five acres adjacent to 301 and believe that that is consistent to provide some opportunity for office and/or commercial uses along that corridor. As stated in the staff report, the nearest restaurant is about a quarter of mile from this location, and the nearest office is about two miles. As Rachel also mentioned, there was a, you know, there is an apartment complex or a multifamily units available, but that's about four and a half miles to the west at I-75, just north of the Outlet Mall. So I think that, you know, in keeping with many of our plan, plant, comprehensive plan policies, I think to have diversity in housing types is one of the things that we are looking for. At this time, there is a PowerPoint presentation, most of the items have already been discussed by Ms. Leighton and Mr. Robinson. Again, it is a large-scale plan amendment to change from Office Medium to Residential ROR and Residential 12. As you can see here on this map, it shows the difference, the area adjacent to 301 is where the ROR will be located, and that meets the locational criteria for commercial development in the comprehensive plan, as well as the Residential 12 portion of the property further to the south. This is our existing future land use categories, and as you can see, the area is surrounded by both Residential 6, UF3, RES 3, and a limited amount of commercial. Some of the commercial that exists has been developed through the UF3 land use category. But in order to have an apartment complex that meets at least minimally the types of densities that you need to have for multifamily, that is the reason for the request to the Residential 12. Here, as you can see, this area through the aerial is pretty developed, and when you look at the densities, and I think one of the things that was interesting in the presentation that was made on our urban corridor, is when you look at the same number of units spread out over a large area, you can see that density is pretty intense there on the north side of US 301, which is Lexington, and that is an attached development. And even the single-family detached units are pretty dense. They have, they have lower densities because they have a lot more land that is dedicated for open space. So I think that when you look at the general area, and the one area where it wasn't designated for development, that's the Garden Lakes Mobile Home Park, which has been in existence for a while. And that's around five dwelling units to acre gross, not net. And here again, we have our existing zoning, which is planned development in this area, and they are proposing to do a mixed use zoning for this project. Consistency with the comprehensive plans includes that the increased population projection of around 500 people can be accommodated in the Subarea 3, which is the area that is, where this project is located. This area had a 2015 population of 25,604 persons and is projected to have a 2020 population of 29,111. The project is located west of the future development area boundary, which is where higher densities and intensity projects are supposed to be located. It is located in an area that has existing facilities, and we try to encourage more intense development and more density in areas where there's already existing facilities and facilities, public services do not have to be provided. The ROR designation provides the opportunity for the necessary services to existing and proposed residents. And the increased residential density provides that opportunity for diversity in housing type. The positive aspects of the project is that you are increasing densities where existing infrastructure exists, and also that there is a reduced PM peak hour vehicle trips associated with this project. That concludes my presentation. It is consistent with the state plan and is consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan. And as you went through your staff report, do you remember we look at the maximum densities and intensities that could happen on the property? Nothing is associated with what is proposed for the rezon.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Are there any questions for Ms. Tusing? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Tusing. We're gonna move to the public comment portion of the hearing, and we're gonna go with those who have signed up first, is Ms. Cecilia Beckett. Yes, ma'am, if you would, please step up to the microphone, state your name and that you have been sworn, and you'll have three minutes to make a statement.
My name is Cecilla Oxford Beckett, and what I have is a question about Oxford Road.
And you've been sworn?
I raised my hand a while ago.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I kind of represent the family. The land on Oxford Road to the east is owned by my brother and me. The land at the highway is owned by my brother's ex-mother-in-law. The land at the far end of the road is owned by my husband's step-great-grandmother's son. So, anyway, Oxford Road is owned jointly at the current time, it's a private road. And I have a copy of an agreement. I think I know what happens to the road when the land is developed, but I'm not sure, and I have been asked by at least two of my relatives to ask a question. So, does anyone have an answer to? We currently pay a little bit of tax every year. My family has half of the road, I believe, and the other half probably is either Wayne or, what is it now, C? I'm not sure the name of the owner at this time, it's switched hands several times. That was my grandmother's land. Does anyone have an answer to what?
Right. Well, the process is you ask the question, and through the, through the additional rebuttals and questions to comment, we'll get an answer, but I do have a question for you. Just for clarification, your family or the group, your family, owned this property at one point?
My grandfather owned all of.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All of it at one point.
Thank you. Well, during either rebuttal or questions to applicant and staff, we'll get, we'll get some answers regarding this.
We want to know, is it going to remain private or be county-owned, and do we still have to pay taxes on it, which we shouldn't have to, I wouldn't think? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens who wish to make a comment or ask a question? Seeing none, we're gonna move to the next portion of the hearing, which is discussions and Planning Commission questions. I have a question regarding Oxford Road. Is, first, is it a public right-of-way? Does the person who purchased the property have an easement? What's the, what's the status of? What's the status of that roadway?
Oxford is a private road. It is a private road, and there's no intent in this application to make it a public road. It will remain a private road, and I'm not sure about the tax aspect to that. I can't opine on that. It's gonna stay a private road, so I can't imagine anything will change with regard to that. We'll certainly work with Ms. Oxford. We have met a couple members of her family with regard to use and what exactly maintenance requirements will have to be involved with that road. And so we will certainly work with Ms. Oxford and her family members to make sure that they are comfortable, because it's a private road, and it's not going to become a public road because of this application.
Right, it's a private road, but who owns it?
It's a mix of ownerships, frankly.
So all parties involved have to be comfortable?
Exactly.
And there's an existing easement that establishes rights?
There is, yeah. It's a mix of ownership, and there's an easement, but certainly we want to make sure that all the Oxford family is comfortable with what we're doing, and we've met with one of them, but certainly we would love to meet with, make sure we meet with everyone to make sure the entire family is comfortable.
Okay, thank you. And again, it's not relative to this hearing, but I presume Ms. Oxford Beckett will have an opportunity at the rezone to see the specifics of those improvements that are going to be proposed?
Exactly.
It'll be reflected in that? Okay. So, that's your answer, Ms. Beckett? Okay, are there any additional questions for applicant? Mr. Rhodes?
Right, one question. Just as a follow-up. So your project is, does it abut Oxford Road to the west? I'm just trying to see the location of where your property is in Oxford.
Go to the document camera, please. Need to push this down a bit. Okay, there's 301. Oxford Road, the private road, is right there, location.
And just a caution, this is a legislative process. This isn't a binding document for this hearing. That'll come forward in the rezone, and it could change between now and then. So I think what testimony we're receiving is the intent of the applicant, not necessarily a matter of fact.
Your project has no encroachment or anything on Oxford Road.
It does not encroach into Oxford Road. Oxford Road has its separate, it's a separate parcel. It is adjacent to Oxford Road, but Oxford Road is a separate, private piece of property.
And this comprehensive plan amendment does not change the land use category?
It does not, not of Oxford Road. Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any additional questions for the applicant? Are there any questions for staff? Ms. Beckett, you would have to, after the hearing, get with the applicant. Thank you, though. Any questions for staff? Staff, are there any closing comments?
Yes, sir.
Applicant, any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Mr. Rhodes?
I make a motion to recommend transmittal of PA 15-03 per the recommended motion in the staff report attached to the agenda memo.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Mr. DeLezline. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, the chair will call a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. So we're gonna go to item number two. Ms. Knapp, would you please read that into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have Z 15-04, DTS Group LLC, TMI Tennis Academy, rezoning of approximately 2.21 acres of a 4.05 acre parcel from planned development residential to residential multifamily, nine dwelling units to the acre zoning district.
Thank you very much. And again, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so just a little bit different than the process we just went through. So, all right. I'm sorry, I forgot your name already.
Brendan Rowe.
Rowe, Brendan Rowe. Mr. Rowe, would you please introduce the project?
Sure.
You need to wear name tags.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Ms. Knapp just explained, this is a straight rezone. It is currently rezoned PDR. It's a 2.21 acre portion of a 4.05 acre property. The section that is rezoned PDR is the only portion that is being rezoned today, and the proposal is to rezone it from PDR to RMF 9, which is residential multifamily, nine dwelling units to the acre. At this point, I'll let the applicant step forward and provide their presentation, and I will follow up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. While the applicant's stepping up, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this matter? Seeing none disclosed, Mr. Gauz, if you would, please make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Bob Gauz with Allison Gauz Incorporated. We are the agent for the owner, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
This is a request, as Mr. Rowe told you, for a rezone from PDR to RMF 9. It is, let me put this down and do the down cam. It's about 2.21 acres, and as you can see on this map, the property actually has two different zoning categories on it. It's got general, commercial, and PDR, and the portion that we are requesting the rezone on is the PDR portion. It actually represents a slight reduction in potential intensity for the site, but it meets the needs of what our client is trying to accomplish. As you are already aware, you know, there's various things that you look at when you consider a rezone, compatibility, changes from original conditions to comp plan. There's about 13 different things, and staff has really laid those out very well in the staff report. But essentially, what you have is, I've got the small aerial here. It's basically currently vacant. It's been vacant for quite a while, and it has a couple of manufactured housing developments on either side of it, and then a little single-family to the direct west of it. And so it's going to have a density, a potential density equivalent to basically what has been surrounding it. And, you know, don't know if you have any questions about this project? We think that it's the right thing. It's a redevelopment, and that's one of those things where part of the reason that we're asking for a straight rezone is that things tend to change in redevelopment. You're trying to make things work, and, you know, you need that, actually need that flexibility. But we can meet all of the criteria in the straight zoning category.
Thank you, Mr. Gauz. Are there any questions for the applicant? Anything? Okay. Appears we don't have a question.
All right, I'll be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna go on to staff presentation. Mr. Rowe, if you would, please make your presentation.
As Mr. Gauz went through, a lot of the things that he discussed, I'm gonna kind of run through real quickly. It's a straight rezone, so it's kind of, it's simple, there's no site plan to review, so it's just following what would be responsible or required by the RMF 9 district. As we've discussed, it's just the rezone of the 2.21 acre portion of the property. It's roughly a little more than half of the site. There is an associated GDP for the site, which I'll discuss in a few slides, but it's located on the west side of 14th Street West, just north of Cortez Road. Just to give you an idea of what's surrounding it, you can see in this map, there's a lot of existing development, both non-residential and residential surrounding. There's a Buffalo Wild Wings to the south approaching the Cortez Road intersection, so there's a commercial subdivision there. As Mr. Gauz explained, the site does have split zoning. It's PDR on the western portion and general commercial on the eastern portion. The yellow box demonstrates the portion of the site that's being rezoned in this proposal. In the future land use, it also has a split future land use for the overall property. The portion of the site that was zoned, PDR, that's being proposed to be rezoned today is RES 16 on the future land use map. This allows a maximum of 16 dwelling units to the acre gross. And then just clarifying the site. And then discussing the density and intensity opportunities or potential for the site. Mr. Gauz basically described this just a few seconds ago, but there's an existing approval for the site. That's PDR 0663ZGR. It established a general development plan for 36 multifamily units that's still in effect today. So the zoning ordinance would replace the prior approval, should it be approved at the Board of County Commissioners next month, should you also recommend approval and move forward. The current conditions of the site are PDR and RES 16. This allows a maximum of 35 units today. Potential rounding differences previously versus today, that's why there's that one unit difference. But the RMF 9 would establish a maximum of nine units to the acre, should it go residential. That's consistent with what the RES 16 future land use category allows, without requiring special approval, which would trigger PDR or going planned development. So nine is the maximum that RES 16 would allow, straight up, without any type of special requests. The RMF 9 and the nine dwelling units per acre is also consistent with things that are surrounding it. There's a lot of properties zoned, RSMH 6, others with the nine dwelling units to the acre, but average six to nine in the surrounding area. There's also a large number of manufactured homes surrounding there, which has a larger, a higher density. So overall, the zoning district that's being proposed today is consistent with what is surrounding the site. The RMF 9 would also allow non-residential development on-site, but that limits that to a .15 floor area ratio, which is approximately 14,400 square feet. Some positive aspects of this proposal before you is, it does have existing access along 14th Street West, so there wouldn't be any new access required. The rezoning would result in a decreased maximum density and intensity for the site compared to what is available today. You also have the potential for diversifying the development of the area, redeveloping a portion of the 14th Street West corridor. And again, the straight rezone doesn't allow for any variations or deviations from the requirements of the RMF 9 zoning district, so it would have to follow all the requirements set forth in Land Development Code. And that completes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rowe. Are there any questions for staff? Mr. Rutledge?
Which supersedes, the nine units per acre or the FAR by code?
For the, well, the FAR would, are you saying if this were to be reapproved?
Yes, sir.
Both of those would supersede what is existing. So today, there is the approval for the PDR for only multifamily units. There's no non-residential that was approved in that general development plan. If the rezone is approved, it would allow both the FAR or the density.
The, and again, on that same line of thought, the .15, that's a, if you were to find that classification, that metric, that's actually part of the RMF 9, yeah, RMF 9 zoning.
Yeah, it's part of the bulk requirements in the Land Development Code.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, we're gonna move to the public comment portion of this hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and make a comment or ask a question regarding this project? Anyone at all?
Excuse me.
All right, we're gonna close public comment, the public comment portion, and ask for staff closing comments.
No further comments.
Thank you. Applicant, is there anything addition you'd wish to add?
I think everything's been covered unless somebody has a question. I'm happy to sit down.
Commissioners? Nothing? Okay, thank you. All right. There seem to be no questions regarding this item, so we're gonna go ahead and call a vote. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DeLezline.
I move to recommend approval of Z 15-04 per the recommendation motion in the staff report attached to the agenda memo.
Thank you, Mr. DeLezline. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Horgan, thank you for the second. Call this matter for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Like sign if you have an opposing vote. Seeing none, chair votes aye, so it passes unanimously. So we're gonna close that hearing. Are there any other matters of business to attend to today? Anyone? Oh, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting.
Close.
Thank you. Thank you very much.